Welcome to the forum for the Barrington School Committee. This is a very familiar format. As what you just watched, we're going to go down the line with opening statements of a minute. The candidates have six wild cards to use. And we're going to begin with Dr. Megan Douglas. And yeah, don't forget, we're going to move past the mic program.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for staying so long. My name is Megan Douglas and I am currently finishing my second term as Barrington School Committee member. I had frankly not considered running again. I had even recycled my signs. But then we had the opportunity to interview for a new superintendent, which was pretty inspiring. And then I got an opportunity to meet our new student rep to the school committee, who's incredibly excited about policy and about having a mentor. And then I really looked at the data that we have and realized that we really haven't finished the work on school, on kids having a sense of belonging in school. And so, for all of those reasons, I decided to get new signs and run again. So here I am. For my background, I'm a recently retired physician due to complications from COVID of sun blasters. I'm also an artist and a board member at Mater Maurin. I'm a longtime soccer coach and a girl scout leader. And I have had the honor of giving the girls puberty night talk at Hampton Meadows for the last decade. I'm married to a professor and Navy captain. I have three kids, two of whom are in college, one in high school. Two fantastic dogs. And I really look forward to sharing more tonight because I think we have 10 questions.
Everyone seems to be complaining about that. That might be jazz as it even goes on. Opening statement for Liz Singh.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Liz Singh. And I'm running for school committee to promote progress and continue moving forward. As the only candidate with young children ages two, five, and seven attending Primrose Hill, I bring a unique perspective. I was born and raised in Barrington. Went to night school, graduated from Barrington High School, and came back here during COVID with my husband and our two children at that time to bring our children the education that I have received and allow them to experience Barrington and its community. I am trained as a pediatric nurse practitioner, but I currently work as a program director overseeing infant brain studies. My journey with the school district began about two years ago when my child, who's seven years old now, is entering kindergarten. We faced unsafe conditions due to a busing issue. Navigating the slow, non-transparent process took six months and required multiple appeals. I understand the challenges that face our district and I'm committed to maintaining Barrington's high standards through transparency and accountability.
Thank you. Karen Rasnick.
I thank you to the League of Women Voters and the East Bay Media for giving me this opportunity to speak to the community. I'd also like to thank the Barrington Library. My name is Karen Rasnick and I am running for school committee as a nonpartisan, open-minded person who will listen and make sensible decisions for the betterment of the Barrington Public Schools and the community. I have lived in Barrington with my husband Marty for over 20 years. We have three adult children who attended Barrington Public Schools. I am recently retired from 36 years of teaching elementary school in the Providence Public School System in third, fourth, and fifth grade, regular education, special education inclusion, and ESL classes. I feel that my background as both an educator and a parent of three children with very different academic needs are beneficial in understanding the importance of communication between educators, administrators, parents, and school committee. I feel that having a teacher on the school committee is vital as there needs to be someone who understands the reality of what goes on inside the classroom from a teacher's perspective and brings this point of view to the school committee. It's important that teachers have a voice in school decisions and their insights and perspectives are valuable and valued. Ensuring their participation will help create more well-rounded and effective solutions for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Nelson.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Nelson and I'm running for school committee as well. I live here with my fiance and our blended family of three sons, ages two through 18. And I've been an education-focused public servant for several years. When I learned that the condition of Rhode Island's public school buildings was quite dire, I founded Fix Our Schools. Traveled around the state, letting people know just how serious the situation was, and I was also asking for help. I was asking for collective voices to figure out solutions. And the result was quite a historic $250 million school construction bond statewide that I'm sure many of you voted for in 2018. In other words, as a direct result of my work, Barrington has saved millions and millions of dollars on its school construction project in the middle school and it will continue to do so with its upcoming projects as well. I worked for four and a half years in our state senate as their educating policy advisor where I wrote the laws that require civics and financial literacy to graduate. Now I'm at DCYF where I communicate with elected officials on a daily basis. I have to meet them where they are because they're not all child welfare experts. My job is to do that on a regular basis and I'll continue to do that for Barrington. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim McNamara.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you to the East Bay Media Group. My very legal voters and to all of you for your patience in staying here for this long night. At the bottom of the card, I believe you referred to the nomination. My name is Tim McNamara. I've been a Barrington resident for 17 years. I'm the father of two children, one who just graduated from BHS last year and another who's a current sophomore. I'm a marketing professional and I've been a coach to more Barrington's young athletes than I can. I'm running for three main reasons. One, to provide common sense, perspective, and a collaborative approach to the issues facing our schools. Two, to ensure sound fiscal management of the school budget, balancing community needs with the associated taxpayer burden. And three, to provide transparency and accountability regarding the actions of the committee. I believe my professional experience in managing marketing agency and in managing multimillion dollar budgets for large network corporations has prepared me for the administrative and fiscal challenges the committee faces. And on the personal side, I have been a coach, a program director, and a board member for Barrington's basketball, soccer, and lacrosse leagues for the past 15 years. Always with passion deserved for the kids and hope to continue to serve those kids as members of the committee.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to questions. A short time here with Ms. Douglas. One minute answers. We'll do Douglas, Singh, and Rasnick for this. One of the largest issues impacting schools in recent years was the decision to remove class levels at Barrington High School. It impacted the way teachers could teach. It impacted honors classes and the opportunities for merit scholarships and it impacted students and opportunities for individualized instruction. Do you support the removal of class levels within the Barrington Public Schools?
So that was a teacher-led decision, which I did support at the time, although I wish that we had been better at proceeding with the decision-making policy which we had put in place two years earlier. Barrington has a history of having really great educational ideas based on good data developed by our teachers who are part of a professional learning community. But we don't always do a great job of getting that information from the teachers, the educators, administrators, to the families so that everybody understands why we're doing what we're doing. And I think that going forward, there's lots of innovation in education. We can't keep doing what we've been doing for the last 30 or 40 years. So we really need to find a way to move forward, rely on our educators to make the educational decisions, but make sure that everybody in the town understands why it is that we are making those decisions.
Ms. Singh, same question. One minute.
Thank you. The de-leveling that occurred should never have happened if proper protocols and practices had been followed in the decision-making process ensuring that decisions are made by school staff and principals rather than approached from the top-down by administration. This could have been avoided. Oh, you can't hear me? I'm sorry. It is essential to offer multiple levels of academic choice because students learn in different cases. Providing options for rigorous courses allows students to select classes that best suit their needs and abilities. Maintaining a range of academic levels is vital for fostering a supportive learning environment where every student can thrive and reach their full potential. We are a school community with some of the best teachers, parents, and students in the state. And our academic offerings should reflect a diversity of opportunities for all students.
Thank you. Ms. Rasnick. Same question. One minute.
I do not support the idea of de-leveling. And that's one of the things that made me very upset when we heard about it. I have three children with all the very different needs. I have a daughter who has autism and she was in the special ed program in the school system. I have a son and a daughter who benefited from the EP and honors classes. And my son is a doctor now in Chicago. I can't imagine that my daughter would be able to take classes with my son and make that decision or have that decision made. I really feel that every child needs to be met at their own needs, at their own level. Everybody needs to feel successful at their own level and not be pressured into taking classes that would not benefit them. We need to provide rigorous and variety in courses that will allow all students to be able to select the classes that are best for them.
Thank you. Anyone else want to jump in on this? You don't have to. Okay, we removed your new question. This is going to go to Lisa Nelson, McNamara, Douglas. So Ms. Nelson, one minute for this. Everyone serving on the school committee in the next four years will be in position to make critical decisions regarding the use of the $250 million school bond, including the final design, space, and infrastructure decisions impacting two-thirds of the schools in the district. What are your priorities, must-have items, wish list items, and overall feelings about overseeing this generational investment in our public schools?
That question deserves to be an entire day's long forum because those are all important questions to answer. The most important thing I can convey is that we need to make sure we have the right people in the table. That does not just include architects and engineers and educators and students, of course. We need experts in childhood development. A classroom for a six-year-old looks a heck of a lot different than a classroom for a 15-year-old. A building for high school operates and the requirements are so much more different than in elementary school. In addition, we need child psychologists, public health experts, to talk to us about things that we wouldn't know. Like, for example, did you know that children breathe in four times the amount of air than adults do? So pollution affects them that much more? We don't have to have those considerations at the high school as much, but we need to think about these things at the elementary school level. Those kind of priorities can't be uniform or one-size-fits-all. They belong in a day-at-least-long forum where we can debate the needs of each academic level and the opportunities afforded to all of them.
Thank you. Mr. McNamara.
Thank you. Thank you. I agree with much of what you just said, in particular reliance on community involvement in decisions we made and then open forum or open discussion about decisions we made. I think what I would write the table for this particular question is the issue of business stewardship and understanding that we need to maximize the investment that we're making while ensuring that stakeholder needs are met using the bargaining power of the town and the budget that we have in order to force contractors into acceptable agreements that can't be, as was referred to in the last session, scope free, right? Understanding that we need to manage budget in a responsible and reasonable way. Minimizing inconvenience. And inconvenience is a too soft word here, but it's the best I've come up with in a moment. But ensuring that there's an environment that can facilitate learning throughout this whole process while maintaining an environment that also provides safety for our children. It's a big project. There's going to be a lot of movement going on. A lot of contaminants in the air. We mentioned a lot of things that'll be out on our fields. We need to make sure that we get community involvement, to understand the concerns of the community, and then manage that process as a committee in overseeing our contractors.
Thank you. Dr. Douglas, same question. One minute.
So I have two parts. One is that we are kind of on the edge of creating a strategic plan that is truly innovative. It's brought in a number of experts to kind of help us think outside the box. Education is no longer sitting in rows in math class and learning your equations. It's about working with groups. We're trying to end collaborating and being creative and you're thinking because we are trying to prepare these kids for the new future, not the future that we entered 20, 30 years ago. So I want that voice at the table and I want that perspective at the table. Some of what we see right now looks like it's just the same spaces on repeat. And so I think we need to push that envelope a little bit. The second thing I'd really like to see is a significant elevation in student voice and student engagement around these projects. One, it's a fantastic opportunity for them to see a really large project done at scale. But the second part is they're the ones that are experiencing it. They're the ones that are going to be learning in it. The kids that are coming behind them are going to be the ones that benefit from it. And so kind of pushing the creative envelope, pushing the innovation envelope, and making sure that the school works for all of the kids that we have. I will say, since I have 52 seconds, that it's also an opportunity actually for finances to come in, right? We have some CTE programs, which are career technical education, for which kids come from other districts and the money follows the kid. So we have opportunities to be really innovative and find ways that have programs that are interesting to more students than just the students in Barrington as a way to help support the education in this district.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on this? All right, new question with Ms. Singh begins. This summer, the school committee voted to install a new multipurpose artificial turf field and running track at Barrington High School. If elected, will you support the plans to complete the track and turf field at BHS?
Can everybody here...? Here we go. Trying to find the perfect spot. I support installing artificial turf and track complexes at Barrington High School in line with the recommendations of the athletic director and district administration. This decision addresses ongoing injuries and maintenance issues with the current fields. Enhancing the exterior of our schools is as important as improving the interior. Most districts now have turf fields and we will use the most environmentally friendly materials available as technology has significantly evolved. As a healthcare provider, I believe sports are essential for children and safe sports facilities are crucial. And injuries caused by poor field conditions are preventable and should be avoided.
Thank you. I'm sorry, this question was going to sing Rasnick and Nelson. So Ms. Rasnick, same question.
So I also agree with what Liz said about the turf. This is going to a vote, so if it is voted for, I will support it. I have children that did sports. I had a son play football. I had a daughter who did field hockey. It's very important that we have safe fields. While I am a tree lover and I love grass, we have fields around the football field that will still remain grass. So it's not like we're taking all of the turf away, all of the grass away to put turf. It's going to be on the football field. And I feel that if that is the request of the athletic director, he's the professional, he knows what he's doing, he's been there a long time. Safety is of the utmost and I know that our school department will use the safest materials possible.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson.
Generally speaking, I'm not thrilled about turf. But the aforementioned 18-year-old both ran track and played soccer. So it's a safety issue. They are not in good shape and they need some help. My understanding is that through the work of the current school committee, significant pains were taken to make sure that the turf will be as environmentally friendly as possible, which is as good as we can get. It's a hard balance to strike when you are simultaneously advocating for the safety of your children and the safety of your children. Because on one hand, they could get injured with the current field. And on the other hand, would the environmental pollutants hurt them as well? Those two questions are hard. And I think the opportunity that the current school committee took to think about it and negotiate together and communicate to come to a consensus is the way to do it.
Yeah, Ms. McNamara. 30 seconds.
So unlike someone whatever about myself online, I am in support of turf. I can explain that to any of you in a separate conversation. But since I only have 30 seconds here, I just want to use this opportunity to point out that while I do support the turf initiative with the high school, I don't support the way that it came about. It goes back to my issue about transparency and accountability on the council. Certain members of the council let the entire middle school conversation happen and come to fruition and come to the decision that we were going to have an election about this before. At the very next school committee meeting, they decided to say they were going to do the high school renovation without consulting anyone else and doing it in a vacuum that the school committee could approve on its own and move forward. I think that if the public had known the school, the high school option was on the table, it might have changed the middle school conversation. I don't think that's fair to the voters.
I don't know if you used a second on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Did you?
I'm going by what they're telling me.
Yeah, I don't want to mess with that. All right.
We'll duke it out later.
No, no, I'm gonna be far too weird. Mr. McNamara, your question begins with you. Some towns and states have begun to adopt cellphone bans in their schools. What is your position on this idea?
So I have spoken to a few different groups of stakeholders about this and there are obvious concerns on all sides. I understand why parents want to be able to reach their children. I understand why teachers want to be able to maintain a safe environment and focused environment in their classrooms. I have to say, after the conversations that I've had, I'm with the teachers on this one. I think that we need to institute a policy in which cell phones are only allowed in the classroom if they're being used in coursework. Checking phones at a door or coming up with some other system as other districts have enacted, I think makes sense for a stable and focused learning environment. Otherwise, the toll on the teachers from what I have been hearing is far too much. And parents can reach their children in between classes if they need to.
Thank you. Dr. Douglas, same question for a minute.
So I also, in principle, agree with a cellphone reduction. Cell phones have been shown to be associated with some mental health issues related to bullying, et cetera, in the high school setting. And based on the experience that my daughters had at the high school, there are a lot of phones all of the time and some kids are watching football games and stuff. So that's not great learning. If we're going to be having these kids in school learning, they need to be learning. The flip side, though, is that the teachers shouldn't have to be like the police officers in the school. So we really need to come up with a policy, preferably within the school. The school would come up with the policy and we would then support it that would allow them to have a plan that they can follow through, that they can support, and that the students will also accept to a certain degree. And if you don't have buy-in, my understanding is some places have those little funny couches, but the kids just take the covers off and stick the cover in the couch. So that will work, right? Because they're clever and smart and we appreciate that about them.
Thank you. Ms. Singh, same question. One minute.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. I just got rid of it. Basically, should we ban or adopt a cellphone policy in schools as some towns and states have been doing?
I feel like that is a question that is maybe more school-based and not necessarily related so much to the school committee. I think it has to start within the school. And I think we need to have some thoughtful discussions about this and gain some more insight and understanding into the situation.
Thank you. You want to jump in on it? Please do. Ms. Rasnick.
As a classroom teacher, I can talk to this question. I taught fifth grade and every day I told my students that I would collect their cell phones and put them in the drawer in my desk. They weren't in trouble for having them even though they weren't allowed in school. And at the end of the day, they collected their cell phones. It was never an issue. I think there needs to be some type of policy to keep our students safe. There have been problems with cell phones happening for a very long time. We need to address it, probably at the school level and different age levels.
Yes, please.
I appreciate the consensus on the panel as it seems we're all in line with this discussion, which is really hopeful. I wanted to point out that relatively recently, there was an article, and apologies for not remembering the publication, that talked to the students and faculty at Central Falls High School and they found it successful. We're not saying to do exactly what any other community does, but starting the conversation and finding out what works for us is exactly what we need to be doing.
Okay. All right, new question. This is Rasnick, Nelson, McNamara. What are some of the most pressing issues our students face today, particularly our tweens and teens? And what would you do at the school committee level to address them?
I think one of the biggest struggles, I talked to my daughter who's 27 today, is still a struggle, that we need to make sure that students feel like they belong. Students have, for a long time, not felt like they belonged in the community. And I think that we need to do things to make sure that the students feel that they have, that the school community is theirs. I have some ideas on that. That would be maybe some community service that would be required. Students maybe should volunteer either through unified activities, best buddies programs, lunch buddies, some mentoring programs or help tutoring either in the community or in their religious organizations. I think this would help people feel more compassionate towards others. I also think we really need to not be tolerated that well. And I think that's a big issue.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson.
It goes along with the cellphone conversation when you start discussing not only distraction and bullying, but the mental health concerns that we're seeing in our youth. Anything from a cellphone, we say cellphone, sometimes it's a euphemism for social media, right? The bullying can happen online. The bullying happens underneath your desk. So when you're talking about cellphone policies, you're also talking about why the cellphone, the cellphone inherently in and of itself is not bad. It's not youth with flip phones that are usually causing so many problems, right? Those concerns create atmospheres, as my colleague mentioned, where students don't feel like they belong because they're being subjected to thang over social media during the school day, or 10 minutes later they'll walk past the person who said that about them. And it creates an atmosphere where they don't feel comfortable. So not only do we need to evaluate a cellphone policy, we need to evaluate what kind of supports we're offering our kids emotionally during the school day, outside of the school day, in the community. It'll help them feel more attached, but it'll also help them understand and handle the many emotions that they're experiencing as teenagers. And I think that would go a long way to helping them feel more belonging.
Mr. McNamara, one minute for the same question.
Thank you. So a couple things. I think that, one, when we talk about the pressing issue facing our teens and tweens today, we need to recognize that the teens and tweens in Barrington aren't necessarily facing the same challenges and anxieties as teens and tweens in other areas. I think that there are some specific things to Barrington experience in our children that as a committee we would try to address. In order to do that, I think elevating the student voice is incredibly important. I think Megan mentioned this earlier as well. And understanding that the students are just as much of a stakeholder in these discussions as all of the rest of us are. And understanding their perspective on the issue before we try to create any solutions. But I think specific to Barrington, there is a pressure to excel. There is this drive to succeed. And I think we need to help them define what success is. Success isn't the same for everyone. There are options and there are pathways for students in multiple ways. College isn't necessarily for everyone. I think that we need to teach our kids that it's not necessarily where you go, it's what you do when you're there. And I think that fostering that sort of vibe would be helpful.
Yes, please, jump in.
So this is pretty much why I'm running. The lack of this sense of student belonging in Barrington has been precipitously low for quite a while. We have been compared on multiple surveys to national data to like districts and we continue to score in the bottom quartile. So while we have kids who are very successful, a lot of them are doing school and that's not okay. So we really need to figure out, by listening to the students, as my counterparts mentioned, how can we get them more engaged? What can we do to make school exciting, a place to learn, that's connected to what the next steps are?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Singh. Give this microphone if I would want to. So my thoughts, to help children feel more included, we need to enhance our mental health support by hiring additional social workers and ensuring easy access to existing counselors. These professionals have the knowledge and resources to promote inclusion and positivity. Additionally, offering a variety of clubs and organizations is essential, allowing students to connect outside of their classroom with people who share their interests and foster the same sense of belonging. I'm also excited about our collaboration with Challenge Success, which prioritizes mental and physical well-being and emphasizes that supporting youth mental health is more important than ever, which is a statement that really resonates with me.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to a new question. Dr. Douglas starts with you. Douglas Singh Raznick. Across the state, anti-trans activists are pushing the school committees to abolish their transgender, gender diverse, and transitioning policies, which have protected all students for seven years. What is your stance on this issue?
I fully support our policy. We had a gender support protocol in place since 2018, I believe, which we wrote with the support of many people at the Health and Wellness Committee, many community members and students. It's worked really well for this district. This past year, we updated it in order to make it a policy to support us all students, and I would continue to support it. Our trans youth are some of the highest risk for mental health and suicide, and it's just unacceptable that we would exclude any child from that safety.
The same question.
I don't have a fully informed perspective on this issue. However, I will ask thoughtful questions and collaborate with experts to better understand the situation. I believe in listening to those experience and knowledge to help guide my decisions and develop a well-informed position.
Please, Raznick.
I don't have a totally informed point of view on this policy, but I will say from a teacher's point of view, I've had trans children in my classroom, and they are children like everybody else. They deserve the respect that everyone else does. They need to be treated like students like everybody else. Inclusion is vital. Acceptance is vital. So if there are policies in school that protect trans students, these policies need to stay and make sure that everybody feels safe in the school's outfit.
Yes, Ms. Nelson, please. 30 seconds.
Thank you. We just had a conversation about kids feeling like they don't belong and the mental health issues that go along with that. These two things go hand in hand. We can't simultaneously say that we want our students to feel belong, that they belong, but exclude one particular group of them. That's just not how that works. So since our policy is in place, and Dr. Douglas seems to be really proud of it, I've heard that it's quite successful, and our State Department of Education has even recognized it. I think we should keep it in place and support it, and shame on those who attack children.
Thank you. New question. Ms. Nelson actually starts with you. So there's two more questions left, this one and one more. So this is Nelson McNamara Douglas. Ms. Nelson, do you believe there are ways the school department could be more fiscally responsible?
Yes, but, or yes, and. Approximately 80% of our budget is a fixed cost. They're built by contracts. They cannot change. That small percentage of budget that we can change, we could evaluate it. But I'm not sure it would have such a significant effect as our taxpayers would like us to believe. I would have no problem looking at that 20% of our budget to see if there's anything that we could tweak, anything that we don't need, or something that Dr. Douglas mentioned earlier, something that we've been really good at accepting but not following through with. Those things should certainly be evaluated. But I did want to set appropriate expectations, because if, let's say, $100,000 is trimmed off, how much money per family is that going to be? Are we really going to feel that difference? I recognize it's a lot of money. I'm not shying away from that. But the fact is that there isn't a ton that the school committee could do with their budget. There's so much of this fixed. It doesn't mean we don't look into it, but did want to set appropriate expectations.
Mr. McNamara, one minute.
Thank you. I'm not going to say much that our resident expert here hasn't already expressed by that, but I will say that I agree with your comments. And I would say that in the spaces where we do have, where the right questions need to be asked, not necessarily accepting what has happened in the past and moving forward in rubber-staining decisions that were made before. I think that we need to question contracts that are in existence. We need to understand the whys and hows of how those decisions were made. I feel like the experience that I have professionally over the last 25 years in managing those types of budgets uniquely prepares me for that. I'm not afraid to challenge existing norms and expectations of budgets and overdefine those kinds of opportunities.
And Dr. Douglas, one minute.
So eight years, eight years of budgets. I've been sitting on the Budget Forecasting Committee for that entire time, so I have a pretty good deep understanding of where our budget was and where it's gone. Unfortunately, around 2010, there were a couple of years where we held the budget so low and the increases so low that at this time now, we are feeling more of the pain because there are things we really should have been doing. We should really have foreign language all the way through the middle school, if not into the elementary schools. But we're not doing that because we didn't have the income at that time to do it. So we have taken the approach of return on investment, looking at what impact we have on the most children, and that's been working pretty well. But then you have a year like this past year, which speaks to what Ms. Nelson said, which is that we had plans, and then we had $1.5 million designated for our teaching staff in alignment with their contract. And then we had an additional $800,000 required for high-cost special education, which is 100% okay, but it definitely limited our ability to do much of anything. Fortunately, the state came through at the end with a little bit of extra, so we were able to get one of the social workers we wanted to have in the district. But the long-term goal is to keep trying to move the envelope forward and making opportunities where we can, like I talked about with the CTE programs, of bringing money back into the district.
Thank you. All right, last question of the evening. Begins with Ms. Singh, so Singh Raznick Nelson. Barrington has been making some new investments in special education in the past couple of years, such as creating a transition program for students in the age 18 to 22 range, building out its life skills space at the high school, and creating breakout spaces for more individualized instruction in some buildings. Is it enough? What else should the district be doing to improve special education?
I look forward to having our youngest learners in preschool be evenly distributed throughout their neighborhood schools, as well as I remain encouraged by the focus on special education resources that are in the current school construction plans to keep transition academy space in-house and offer accessible playgrounds. And we can advocate for better funding for special education services as these are not reimbursed enough by the state.
Ms. Raznick, one minute.
I am thrilled that there is a transition academy in Barrington now that was not available when my daughter went through the school system several years ago. It's wonderful that we can keep our students here in town because this is their community, and we don't have to send them down to Raja Williams or UCRI. I think that we need to make sure that we have enough reimbursement from the state for special ed because special ed costs a lot of money. The current construction plans need to make sure that we have space for special ed. I know that there are some special ed classrooms that are now held on stages and in converted closets. It's not acceptable. Special ed kids are, they have different needs than the other community, but they also need to be part of the schools. They need to be included in chorus and band and swim. And I feel like they're part of the community, and we need a space for them. That's very important.
Ms. Nelson, one minute.
Thank you. Progress has certainly been made, but there's always room for more, right? We all want everything that's the absolute best for our kids, and we should. And we shouldn't stop fighting until we get what we think our children deserve. It was mentioned a couple times about the statewide reimbursement for special education costs. Part of my job, my day job, is talking to our elected officials, advocating for those who can't advocate for themselves. It's important that we can have those relationships and those conversations. They need to hear from us. They need to hear that we need help too, because to be honest, sometimes Barrington gets pushed to the lower end because we can afford it, right? But we have to acknowledge that some things are also without our control. It's really important for us to communicate with other decision-makers to make sure that we can work as a unit, we can communicate well, and we can get even more opportunities for our students.
Thank you. All right, also, let's make sure that microphone is on, just to be sure. We're going to move to closing statements unless anyone else has anything on the special education topic. Okay, so Dr. Douglas, we're going to come back around to you. We have one-minute closing statements plus additional time, so that gives you up to a minute and a half if you would like. Maybe again.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight and for staying for the long haul. I appreciate it. I, as I said before, I wasn't sure I was going to do this again, but when I looked back on the history I have on the school committee, I really am proud of three things in particular. One is shepherding medically recommended school start time change through after 10 years of discussion in 2019. It is now just the standard. There are still some people, I think, that maybe would like it changed, but in general, the community has adjusted, and it's the right thing for our kids. The second was revamping the NEAB contract with our teachers in support of our professional learning community. We value teachers who seek another level of education. So most of our teachers have masters, doctorates, are working on doctorates, and that trickles right down into our classrooms where we see the benefit of that. And of course, after all of those unexpected COVID challenges, which were definitely not on my radar when I first ran, I'm really proud of the fact that we kept the K-6 kids in school full-time and then hybrid for 712 with the idea that at this point, we are not dealing with some of these losses that other districts faced. And today, I had the honor of sitting at the Blue Ribbon awarding ceremony at Soham School. This is just four years after COVID. These kids are just surpassing all expectations in terms of reading, writing, arithmetic, the classics. But they're so excited about it, and that was what was the most thrilling thing. So having successfully helped the district through that place, I'm very proud of that. And I look forward to addressing the issues with student engagement in the next four years as my kind of swan song, I guess.
Ms. Singh, you have up to three and a half minutes if you'd like.
I'll take that time. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Espace Media Group for hosting this, and thank you to everybody else who's on the stage with me tonight, and everybody who's here. As I said, it's getting late. And I stand before you as not just a candidate for the school committee, but as a passionate advocate for mine and our children's future. I'm running as an independent because I believe partisan politics have no place on our school committee. Instead, I rely on common sense, data, and facts to guide decisions for the benefit of our district. My vision is rooted in collaboration, transparency, and a commitment to excellence in education. I believe that every child deserves access to high-quality resources and a supportive learning environment. Let's build a brighter future for our schools together. Thank you so much.
Again, Ms. Raznick, you have up to three minutes if you'd like.
Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, Espace Media, for giving me this opportunity to speak to the community. I was motivated to run for school committee for several reasons. I wanted to bring a teacher's perspective to the school committee as there haven't been too many teachers on the school committee. I also wanted to support the new superintendent and the assistant superintendent in their administering of the Barrington schools and our demand for blue ribbon excellence in our schools. I want to make sure that the building of the new schools is done in a way that will benefit the town environmentally and inclusively without being a financial burden on our citizens, especially the elderly who are finding it more difficult to afford their homes. And now that I'm retired, I'm starting to become part of that whole community. I want to give a thoughtful, common sense perspective and be a person who listens to everyone, is transparent, and a person who makes rational economic decisions. We don't need to be subject to expensive lawsuits or ideas of de-leveling that have plagued us in the past and have been an embarrassment to our community. I am running as an independent because I don't believe school committee should be political. It is about what is best for our students and those who educate our students. Politics and personal agendas do not belong in the school committee. I am asking you to elect me to the Barrington School Committee. I hope to build a strong bridge in the relationship between educators, administrators, parents, school committee members, and students. With a strong relationship, we can continue to ensure that Barrington Public Schools remain the highest level of excellence for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, same thing, up to three minutes.
Is this like, is this any better?
Well, I don't know. Ask the audience.
Is it any better? We saw a green light, and then the green light went away.
Yeah, then just use the other microphone.
Is that? I feel like I'm in a Verizon commercial. I want to thank everyone for staying and the League of Women Voters and our members of the media for being here. I appreciate the time that you're spending. It's apparent that you all are as dedicated to this as we are, or you wouldn't be here. And I really appreciate that. Our school community is at a bit of a crossroads. We have a once-in-a-generation, potentially once-in-a-lifetime school construction project renovation that's on the horizon. There are questions about how we balance our academic excellence with the heightened levels of stress that our students are telling us they feel. And there appears to have been sometimes a breakdown in communication among neighbors. Like, we're neighbors. You're my neighbor. Town council, our other boards and commissions, they're all of our neighbors. And for some of the issues that have been presented today, it seems like sometimes it's a breakdown in communication, and that just needs a little bit of attention and a little bit of grace, a little bit of a fresh start. And based on the experience that I have, $250 million for school construction statewide. I wrote laws on graduation requirements that we all agree are in place to help our kids succeed. And I work for DCYF, arguably one of the most challenging state departments in Rhode Island. And my job is to communicate with people of all walks of life who aren't speaking my language. I need to find ways to meet them where they are and make sure we end up with the same understanding so that we are all working for the same goals. In my day job, that's our underserved, our vulnerable populations, the youth and the families. Here, it's still youth and families. It's still our kids. It's still you. And being able to identify miscommunications or areas where we might just be missing each other is crucial to avoid. Those miscommunications that I feel like have plagued us in the past, those three main issues are in front of us right now, and I just happen to be uniquely qualified to help address them. It's luck, but it's true. And I think I can help. I'd like the opportunity to try, and so I ask for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McNamara, up to two and a half minutes if you'd like.
Great, thank you. Thank you once again to all of you and to our hosts. It's been a long night, and I appreciate that I'm the last person speaking, so I'll try not to. I think that one underlying theme in a lot of what we talked about tonight that didn't really get directly addressed is the idea that, I personally, and I think many of you feel that one of the biggest issues with the school committee right now is that there's a need to repair relationships and reestablish trust. I think that there's been a lot of animosity. If you've read any of Espace's editorials, you understand the animosity between the town council and the school committee and the parents and school committees. There's a need to repair those relationships and reestablish trust. And I hope that through my comments tonight, I've shown you all that I'm dedicated to collaborative, common sense solutions to try and begin that rebuilding. If I haven't made that clear to you, please go to my website, mcmaramerbse.com. If you go there, you see that I've tried to boil my approach down to three simple steps. Not simple, but some basic steps. And then, since we're talking about schools, let's keep it juvenile and say, let's bring the ABCs back to the school committee. So A, accountability and transparency. We need to understand why the committee has made the decisions that they make. If you've gone to any meetings in recent history, you'll see that they've been on executive session almost as much as they've been on public session. So we need to shine some daylight on some of those decisions that have been made. B, budgeting, sound official stewardship. I'm a little bit of a broken record on that, but it's certainly something that needs to be paid attention to, especially given the projects that we have coming. attention to, especially given the projects that we have coming up. And last, C, common sense and collaboration. Starting to really listen to the community voices, all the general stakeholders who are involved, and to have the committee serve as a conduit to those decisions being made as opposed to a body that is opposing those decisions on the rest of the town. If you have followed this small race on social media, you see that there is a significant group of people that are focused on historical differences and disputes involving the committee. That's not a plan to create a more positive future for us. We've got these big initiatives in place, fields, school construction, all of the issues that we discussed tonight. The committee needs to focus on those things and not rehash the past. So it's my intention to work to build a committee that can find those shared values and try to create innovative solutions to meet them. And I humbly ask for your vote to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who talk about the lateness of the hour, just wait till you get on the school committee. All right, thank you all. Congratulations.